All right, the call to order. You don't need to rearrange your TV sets or your screen.
Mike.
You don't need to rearrange your screen. Abby, can you call the roll, please?
Yes. Mayor Protem Rubello.
Here.
Councilmember Burches.
Here.
Councilmember Karen.
Here.
Councilmember Frederick.
Present.
Councilmember Rusi.
Here.
Councilmember Vitale.
Here.
And Mayor Walby has asked to be excused.
Moved to excuse.
Support.
Forum is present.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Proclamations and presentations. Tanina Lefata and family, can you please come up? It's a special day here. Does she need a chair?
Sure.
No, I don't need a chair.
Everybody, this is amazing.
I want her to see better.
101 years old here. Well, you can't miss this. That's incredible. You look fantastic. And I understand she still can do the cha-cha? What do you do? A little bit of that swing? She still could dance.
Ballroom dancing.
Okay. Amazing story.
After my husband passed away, it's what I do now.
Yeah.
And I started to dance, and it was the best thing I ever did. I loved it.
Amazing.
Oh, did they?
Did get married again. Is that on? You want to say a few words?
Well, I've had a beautiful life. I've got a beautiful family, a son and daughter-in-law, and I have another son and daughter-in-law. They leave... Left now, dead.
Okay, it's...
He just called me from the airport.
I'm sure you had an amazing story, and I was saying a few things. Amazing family to be able to have somebody around for 101 years. So you guys have done one heck of a job. So, Mrs. Lefata, you look amazing.
Thank you.
And it's great to... How many generations you have here?
Five. We have five.
Incredible.
Yeah. My granddaughter's over there, and her husband. She's got two little ones.
That's amazing. And for those of you, Tony Lefata here, her son, how many years were you with Royal Brian Ford, Tony?
I retired from Royal Brian Ford 23 years ago. I was there for 42 years.
Yeah.
That's worth applauding.
These folks have seen a lot of stuff here. So it is my pleasure to be able to give you a proclamation.
Thank you.
From the city of St. Clair Shores, on behalf of everybody, including the mayor, who's not here today. Let me read this to you. Can you hear me that? Thank you. This is a proclamation to Tanina Lefata, okay?
Yes.
That's a nice Irish name.
Whereas the mayor and council of the city of St. Clair Shores do hereby wish to extend
best wishes to Tina Lefata on the occasion of her 101st birthday. And whereas Tanina, affectionately known as Tina...
Yes.
Is that what you went by, Tina, the whole way?
Yeah, most of everybody calls me.
She was born October 14th, 1924. She was one of seven children to Italian immigrant parents who owned a grocery store in Detroit where she worked serving customers. And whereas Tina married her husband Joe at the age of... You want to say that?
Sixteen.
Yikes, okay.
Ran off and married him.
And together had two sons.
Two wonderful sons.
Two wonderful sons. Okay, and there's one of them right there. So 1975, get this. So she was born in 1924. In 1975, she returned to night school, graduating as a valedictorian from Lake Shore School. She then built a successful career with Avon Cosmetics Company, where she worked as a sales representative and manager for more than 50 years. And whereas Tina, Joe, and their children then moved to St. Clair Shores in 1957, where she lived for the past 68 years and continues to reside today. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council of the city of St. Clair Shores, on behalf of all of our residents here, deem it an honor and a pleasure to extend our sincere congratulations and best wishes to Tanina Lefata as she celebrates 101. Happy birthday.
Thanks.
That's incredible. Tony did that with her eyes, and she'd be perfect, because she looked in great shape, actually.
I've got emakler degeneration.
Okay. Well, it was a pleasure to have your family up here.
Thank you very much.
Alyssa, can you maybe get a picture? Would you like a picture of everybody here? Wonderful. Thank you so much for taking the time, being able to come here tonight. Okay, wonderful family, okay? Hey, Tony?
Yes?
You escaped. There you go. That's yours.
Oh, thank you.
Yep, that's yours. All right. That's an amazing story. We have a special presentation from the Beautification Awards. We're going to be awarding businesses and residential neighbors. John? Nope, there you go.
Thank you. All right, good evening, everybody. So it's Beautification Award season again, and I want to congratulate all the awardees that we're going to be recognizing here tonight. But first, let me tell you a little bit about what Beautification does, because it's one of the hardest-working commissions, committees, boards that we have here in the city. Go to the next one. So Beautification members, we manage landscape beds, flower beds, sign beds, flower pots all over the city. And we've got, you know, small ones, they're just like, you know, pots at various of the parks. We also got large ones. For example, I think our largest one is the median at 12 Mile and Greater Mac, that all of our volunteers take care of these, and it's year-round. This isn't just a summer project. We're doing spring cleanup, plant for the summer, fall, and then even decorate for Christmas and winter, Christmas trees on all the city signs around the entire city. So incredibly hardworking group, and let's show some of these members. Some of them are here today, so if you're a member of the Beautification Commission, would you please stand up over there? Because if you don't, I'll just call you out by name. Thank you for all the hard work this commission does. And one of the great things of being... I've been on this for almost 14 years now. One of the great things about this commission is that a lot of the members have been there even prior to me joining, and when they join, they stay. It is a very solid group of people, very tight-knit and hardworking, and they all work great together. So it's a great commission to be a part of. And as part of the commission, you know, there's a lot of businesses in the city that we rely on help from. So just want to recognize them. You know, Sawyer Landscaping and Garden Center over on Little Mac, Hall's Nursery, you know, they don't do retail anymore, but they do do bulk for us as they're over on Industrial Drive, so still a big shout-out to them. Landscape Services, a lot of hard work goes in from their crews on the city, and as well as First State Bank. All the red tulips that you see around the city, we make sure that we get a donation every year from First State Bank to plant them in the fall so they come up in the spring. So big shout-out to them for always helping us out. And before we get to the awards, Lil, would you like to come up and say a few words? Alyssa, Lil Claycomb, she has been the chair of the commission, and I will not say for how many years, but she wanted to say a few words.
Okay. Right now, as the fall gets closer and closer, we do this, and we have done this for years. When we started, there was very few cities that do it, but now everyone has done it. And I think it's a real honor to our community, but I want people to understand, not one person picks the businesses or the homes. We put them in to our meetings. We all... There's a membership of 12, right, John? And they are voted on according to 50% is the home, such as you put a new roof, a new shutters, maybe you've added a patio, maybe you've done different small things that make your house really becoming to the neighborhood. And the other 50% is your landscape. And of course, everybody, their own home is beauty, and that's what you enjoy, but for a lot of people who maybe drive down the street and they see this one house, and it meets the criteria, so then we turn this in and then we all vote on it. So I just want everybody to understand that this is a group effort and that we all try to get as many homes as possible, but we are only a group of 12. So if you have a friend, if you have a neighbor, or maybe your own home, you think, well, maybe I'd like to try for that. And so we welcome anybody who would like to participate, but please remember, we look at the front yard and the backyard. We got caught one year because we didn't check the backyard, and we... Anyway, I won't go into it. But it's... Most of us have been here a long time, so we thank the effort that you people today that we're giving the awards to have put into our homes to make St. Clair Shores. A few years ago, why, you notice how that some streets, the homes look better than other streets, and all it takes is one, one home. And through the years, as I said years ago, why, this is what builds a beautiful neighborhood. And thanks to all of you for your support and help. We get a lot of help from the city, I have to say, because, you know, we couldn't do this on our own. But when we're all working together, it makes a really beautiful city. We had an event here a couple of weeks ago, and I had a lot of friends that came, and they said they had no idea St. Clair Shores was as pretty as it is, even with the police station door up. How's that? So that, again, we thank you all. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Lil. Mr. Mayor Protem, would you care to do the first residential award?
I'll do the residential. You... Okay. Those are the business ones? I will do the residential. Okay. Some of this stuff is beautiful, that's for sure. Okay, the first person to call up here is Janice Dumichel. The Dumichels.
And Jim Marshall.
And Jim Marshall. Okay.
Yeah.
Any relation to the Dumichels that we see their names?
Yes.
On the run?
Yes. You know, I don't admit to all of them, but yes.
Okay. They're always nice to me.
Yeah.
Okay. Our disproclamation. Wonderful. Whereas the mayor and council of the city of St. Clair Shores, on behalf of the Beautification Commission, deem it fitting and proper to publicly recognize the outstanding efforts made by individuals in helping to beautify our neighborhoods and maintain the image of our city. So thanks for taking that extra effort, for sure. Whereas Janice Dumichel...
And Jim Marshall.
And Jim Marshall has displayed community spirit and a willingness to enhance the beauty of their property, which demonstrates a strong sense of civic pride. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council of the city of St. Clair Shores, on behalf of our citizens, deem it an honor and a pleasure to extend our congratulations to Janice Dumichel and...
Jim Marshall.
Jim Marshall on receiving the 2025 Beautification Award, and that's presented on this day in September. Thank you so much, and thank you for the effort.
Thank you very much.
It takes... Like I said, they're doing both, the businesses and the residents, and when it all works together...
Oh, wow. Beautiful, thank you. Wow, thank you so much. Whoops. Thank you.
Congratulations. Yes, congratulations.
Second person we'd like to call up is Alex and Erica Atoy. Oh, what a beautiful home here on Urban. Okay, my goodness. Alex and Erica, thanks for showing up tonight.
Thank you for having us.
On behalf of the Beautification Committee. Whereas the mayor and council of the city of St. Clair Shores, on behalf of the Beautification Commission, deem it fitting and proper to publicly recognize the outstanding efforts made by individuals in helping to beautify our neighborhoods and maintain the image of our city. And whereas Alex and Erica Atoy at 22312 Urban have displayed community spirit and a willingness to enhance the beauty of their property, which demonstrates a very, very strong sense of civic pride. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council of the city of St. Clair Shores, on behalf of all of its citizens, deem it an honor and a pleasure to extend our congratulations to Alex and Erica Atoy on receiving the 2025 Beautification Award.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks so much.
Can attest that the Beautification Commission appreciates this stuff. They're always working very hard. Can I bring up now Anthony and Francis Julien? I hit it twice. You're looking like my sister.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I haven't seen the sister in a little bit. Anyways, thank you for being... Coming over and grabbing one of these. Okay. Anthony and Francis Julien. Whereas the mayor and council of the city of St. Clair Shores, on behalf of the Beautification Commission, deem it fitting and proper to publicly recognize the outstanding efforts made by individuals in helping to beautify our neighborhoods and maintain the image of our city. Thank you very much. And whereas Anthony and Francis Julien at 23257 Rosedale Court North have displayed community spirit and a willingness to enhance the beauty of their property, which demonstrates a strong sense of civic pride. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council of the city of St. Clair Shores, on behalf of our citizens, deem it an honor and pleasure to extend our congratulations to Anthony and Francis Julien on receiving the 2025 Beautification Award, presented on the 15th day of December... September 2025. Thank you very much. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Awesome. Fantastic. Good deal. And I know John and Diana Lynch over there, and Lil and Claycomb, they take great honor and all that, so...
Definitely, definitely. All right, on to the next set of awards. So we are now doing the 10-year Business Awards, and these are businesses that have received a Beautification Award 10 years or more in the past, and they've upkept their businesses or organizations for all that time. So this is a very special award that Beautification gives out, so that's why they get a plaque. So the first one to come up can have John, Lauren, and the rest of the group from Windwood So this is being given the Windwood Point condominiums over on Jefferson, and this is to honor the continuous excellence and outstanding landscape beautification and building maintenance, presented on this day, 15th of September 2025. So, Lauren? I know you do a lot of the work over there, so in terms of coordination. So congratulations, and, you know, the complex there in the Nautical Mile is just always beautiful and has been for many years. So thank you for all the hard work you guys do there. Greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Mr. Rubello's dentist. Mr. Brian Hunt, please come up. All right, so this is Dr. Brian Hunt over on Jefferson, receiving a 2025 10-year Business Beautification Award to honor the continuous excellence and outstanding landscape beautification and building maintenance, presented this 15th day of September 2025. Dr. Hunt, thank you very much. Congratulations.
I want you to come by tomorrow, my office. Pick up a check for $1,000 for that lady over there.
I will do that. I will do that. And Dr. Hunt is already thinking how to spend it. All right, and the third 10-year Business Award goes to Lakeview Condominiums. Brian, would you come on up?
Also on Jefferson, on Lake St. Clair, so this is for the 2025 10-year Business Beautification Award to Lakeview Condominiums to honor the continuous excellence of the outstanding landscape beautification and building maintenance, presented on this 15th day of September 2025.
Awesome. Congratulations. Thank you for all the hard work in your complex. Greatly appreciate it.
Okay.
All right.
Business Awards.
Now we go on to the annual Business Awards. And so can I have Rebecca from H3 Wellness come on up? I'm going to have to read this without my glasses. Let's take a shot at this.
Whereas the mayor and city council of the city of St. Clair Shores, on behalf of the Beautification Commission, deem it fitting and proper to publicly recognize the outstanding efforts made by commercial businesses in helping to beautify our business districts and maintain the image of our city. And whereas H3 Wellness Collective on Jefferson Avenue has displayed community spirit and a willingness to enhance the beauty of its property, which demonstrates a strong sense of civic pride. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council of St. Clair Shores, on behalf of its citizens, deem it an honor and pleasure to extend our congratulations to H3 Wellness Collective for a 2025 Beautification Business Award winner. Congratulations. Thank you for all of our work. And when we were taping the show, eventually, I know Steve was finishing up in the back room just before the meeting, Rebecca told me a story of how they had to basically redo all the landscaping outside because their original building had windows that went down towards the basement. And during some of the rains that we had, not so good. So all the re-landscaping, all the beautification that she did was also a response to that, to make it more resilient. So congratulations, and thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up, Francesca. We have Francesca Keller here from Brightside Dental on Harper, north of 13 Mile.
And whereas the mayor and city council of the city of St. Clair Shores, on behalf of the Beautification Commission, deem it fitting and proper to publicly recognize the outstanding efforts made by commercial businesses in helping to beautify our business districts and maintain the image of our city. Whereas Brightside Dental on Harper has displayed community spirit and a willingness to enhance the beauty of its property, which demonstrates a strong sense of civic pride. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council of the city of St. Clair Shores, on behalf of our citizens, deem it an honor and a pleasure to extend our congratulations to Brightside Dental, 2025 Beautification Business Award winner. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
And our final award of the evening, we have... Anyone here from Mike's on the Water? Now, Mike is busy being himself over at Mike's on the Water. So Mike's on the Water is the third recipient here, and basically, it's a bit of an eclectic look, but they've done a lot in terms of what they can do within the Nautical Mile District, planters, and even had some very unique art of outboard motors that they put on the wall. So, and very special for them, we did the taping for the Council Connection where all the business awardees were recognized. The mayor did his mayor's corner, recognizing the residents, but we did Mike's taping in his Snoopy room, and that, which is a Snoopy museum that has this whole collection of Snoopy and Peanuts characters all through there. So that... And he's using that admission there for raise money for charity and that. So go down to Mike's on Water, if you check out the Snoopy museum, drop a donation. He's helping out a different charity every month, so he's doing a lot of great work. So like with the awards last night, we greatly accept this on his behalf. So again, thank you to the Beautification Commission for all the hard work that you do. Congratulations to all the awardees here tonight. Thank you for all the hard work you do on your properties, and keep up all the great work. After the presentations, the Beautification has a little reception set up out in the hallway for you, so thank you.
Awesome. And I will take that. Put your glasses back. All right, good work, boys. All right. Some great stuff, for sure. Makes all this beautification, everything works together. They make a nice city and want people to live there. We thank them very much for what they do, and they do it every day. They're out there every day. Okay, moving on to item 2C, Lakeview Beautification Award. Lakeview Superintendent, Mr. Carl Paulson from Lakeview High School. Carl puts the bite in Huskies.
Okay.
And a CMU guy.
Yes, I am. Wait. One other one, too, but we'll leave that out. I rise tonight, I thank the council and Mayor Walby for allowing me to come and share just a couple minutes of information for our community. You know, in transition from the Beautification Awards, our last bond did dramatic things to the campuses and the look from the street of our buildings, because a number of our buildings looked like 1955 before 2019. The high schools had a lot of updates. Jefferson Middle School had a lot of updates. Now all four elementaries have had updates, and we're not done yet, so that's why I'm here. I'm going to speak about our upcoming bond election, November 4th. It's 44.1 million is what we're seeking. It will last about six years' worth of projects. It will be a no-tax levy increase bond, similar to our last couple of bonds that we've done. And, you know, we have a long history of prudent spending and fiscal management in the district. I mean, I've been with the district 23 years, 18 as superintendent, and we've got clean audits all back... Way back before I started. And what it's all about is, when you make a bond presentation and you go to Treasury and apply, you make promises in that Treasury application. And for Lakeview, in every bond I've been associated with, '01, '07, '19, promise is made, promise is kept. This is how schools fund big capital project infrastructure changes and updates, so... This is how schools fund big capital project infrastructure changes and updates. So in this case, our work isn't as exciting maybe. Replacement of classroom, gym, and office heating and cooling. Safety upgrades at all campuses. Done a bunch of those already, but more to come. Technology infrastructure, cabling, devices, you know, switches, servers, those types of things. And user, end-user device replacement. Roofs at several locations. Some parking lot work that we haven't already done. Renovation of wheat to all early childhood. Currently, we're in the front, early childhood's in the back. Replacement of the Jefferson tennis courts, which is a big community use facility. And much more. So I just come to say, let the community be informed, our voters be informed, 44.1 million, no tax levy increase, November 4th date. We currently have 6.15 mils. Our financial consultant, you know, displays that out with some pretty conservative, long-term looks at, you know, taxable value changes and things like that. And we will be able to do this carrying 6.5 mils going forward. We're hosting a community meeting, open to anyone in the community that wants to come and find out more, next Monday night, 6:30 at our campus across down the street at Hunt Harper, the Wheat Building. And there'll be a short presentation and then plenty of time for question and answer. We're as open as it gets. Our transparency historically has been as open as it gets. And when we tell people why we're doing what we're doing and what the plan is, and then we meet, we meet those promises years later, gives community trust in what we're talking about and what we're asking for. Easy to follow us on Facebook. Information will be continuously distributed there. Our parents, of course, will get information via email. The website has details. You can see the whole 38-page treasury application on the website if you want to go look at it. And it details down to, you know, every line item at every building. All seven campuses will be affected by this bond, similar to the last couple. And I, you know, offer it up for any questions if you have any.
I will ask your question.
Mr. Vitale.
The bond vote is because it's not in your budget to pay for a loan, correct?
No schools in Michigan build buildings, make major capital infrastructure changes, pave parking lots necessarily. Sometimes you can do one here and there. And we have saved money and made fund balance and done projects that were necessary to do because it hit us. And you, an example is our auditorium and heating and cooling, and it also affected our band rooms and classrooms on that whole wing. That was not a bond-covered expense, but we had enough savings to pull it off last year. And it was a $400,000 cost that wasn't in a plan, but it failed because it's 25 years old. A lot of what I'm talking about in terms of heating and cooling, which is probably 10 million of this 44 million, that was put in in 2001. And those things are end of life. They don't last like they used to. We did all the boilers, but not the classroom units and the rooftop, some of the rooftop units that serve gyms and things of that sort. So in Michigan, this is, this is how schools fund big projects like this.
So then you're aware that these units are decades old and you don't budget for replacement? Because you're going to fund them with a bond?
Well, we have 90% of our funding from state legislature and governor.
Well, money can be, money can be set aside, correct? You're allowed to put money aside for project.
Sure, and we have. So for emergency projects that come up, we've done it. Yep.
One other item I wanted to ask you about, unrelated to bonds, but since you're here. We have had some residents that complained about the lights coming in from Lakeview High School.
Years ago, when they were installed, we addressed those?
No, not, not talking about athletic field lights.
Well, I'm talking about the parking lot lights. Those are where the complaints came.
Okay. No, these are lights on the building. So I'll forward those along. I just wanted to make you aware while you're here in front of us.
Probably the power packs were replaced as LEDs, not through our bond, but through normal maintenance. And LEDs are a lot brighter. It's possible. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Superintendent Paulson, thank you for coming.
Appreciate the opportunity.
And again, that meeting, the meeting that you're talking about is-
Monday night next week, 6:30 PM at our Wheat Campus in the gym.
Okay.
Plenty of signage for that.
That's at Harper and, is that Yale?
27575 Harper.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Item two D, State Representative Kimberly Edwards. The state representative, tell us a little bit where your sort of jurisdiction is and-
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yeah, okay, good. Usually these AirPods help me with hearing, but didn't just now. Anyway, I cover Wayne and Macomb County. I cover South St. Clair shores, East Point, the east side of Detroit, and a precinct in Rose Point. So I was asked to come today and I'm grateful to be here and I appreciate you all for giving me this time. But I want to give you guys an update on what's going on in Lansing and in regards to the budget. So just wanted to share what the shutdown could mean for us in St. Clair shores. If the state does not pass the budget soon, the city could face delays in funding that we count on for projects like roads, public safety. The schools might have to stretch their money, borrow, or even cut programs for the children, which is what the superintendent mentioned. Things like renewing licensing from the Secretary of State, getting inspections done will be slowed down. The police and fire emergency service will still be there for us, but the budget cuts could delay in providing extra stress for the families. Again, I want to reiterate why it's really important for us to get this budget done. If it's not done by October 1, we will face a huge shutdown and it will impact over 55,000 individuals. I would like to have an opportunity to meet with you guys another day, not in this type of setting where I can get to know you all and find out what top priorities again for the city are, so we can continue to try to work on those projects together. And that is all that I have for updates and all that I have to share. Again, I appreciate you guys for giving me this moment, giving me this opportunity to speak with you all on the major issue that's going on in Lansing right now.
Thank you, state rep. Maybe you can get together with Abby and try to set something up for all of us, you know, on a group or individual basis, whatever. Okay. I commend you. You do a lot of good social work stuff, too.
Thank you. I am a social worker, too.
I know you do.
And I want to apologize for my attire. I had been in the community all day and I did not have time to run home and change because we were outside talking to our neighbors and making sure they knew what was going on in Lansing. So yeah, thank you for that opportunity.
You oversee a lot of people, right? I mean, you're like 89, 90,000 people that are in your-
Yeah, it's a lot.
That's fantastic.
So if you happen to see a yellow bag on your door, I did personally put it there because we're doing like sunshine bags where we're trying to brighten up people's feelings and emotions right now with everything going on. So as we're talking to individuals, you know, I might drop a sunshine bag at your door.
Want to thank you for coming and letting people know that, you know, you're open and they can talk to you.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number three, audience participation on any of our agenda items. Abby, is there anybody?
Yes, we have one speaker, Brian Wukowski, a St. Clair shores or a Rochester Hills resident, speaking on agenda item 5B.
Yeah, here, if you just give me, we can pass it down.
Rochester, you came a long way.
I think it was 33 minutes today. It's perfect. But on 75, there was a little bit of a backup. Still 33 minutes. Council members, thank you very much for your, for your time and your oversight for the community. My name is Brian Winckelsky and I'm with Advantage Business Systems. We're one of the bidders for 5B that you're, that you're going to be voting on today, approving the purchase for the high-density files for the new police department. It were actually the low-qualified bidder. And I just found out on Friday when I viewed the site, the city site in the agenda packet, that my pricing was increased $4,000 without, without my approval. And we do not agree on, on that happening. If we take a look at, well, your second page there, and we're fully aware of what the bid document said. The contractor shall include and be deemed included in this bid contract price all Michigan sales and use taxes currently imposed by legislative enactment. So we were clear that this is a construction project. And we're to, with construction projects, we are to include use taxes. It's not called a sales tax. It's a use tax. It goes in a different part on the form and my accountant handles that. If you take a look at that next page, we're up at the top, it says extras. The bidder shall include all costs within their bid. No claim for extra compensation because of failure to include all costs in their bid to provide a complete and operation product will be allowed. We complied with that again there. We understood the price we put down is the price we put down. And there's nothing else that, that can be added. If you go to the next page, our contract, as, as in dealing with, with most cities, we, city, any type of government, put on there, we assume no state of Michigan sales tax for the purchase as the city is tax exempt, as all cities are tax exempt. I received notice back saying that, well, my meaning was the city will not be charged an extra amount complying with all contract documents. I was told that because I said, we assume, assume no state of Michigan sales tax is going to be charged to you, I was told that they need to charge sales tax.
Sir, I have to cut you off right here. You're sort of, we let you go a little bit over the two minutes.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Was that two minutes? I apologize.
Yeah, that little buzz was, for sure.
Can I have five seconds?
Five seconds.
Thank you. So it's a pricing difference of $4,672 in between myself, the low bidder, and another bidder.
Gotcha.
Thank you. And, and if you could change that amount in, in, in your notes and however you vote is fine. But just wanted you and your constituents to know it's $4,672.
That's all? Abby?
Yes, that was it.
Okay, let's move on to agenda item four, request approval of a policy regarding mechanical equipment arbitration. Ms. Denise Pike.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council. What is before you tonight is a request for council to adopt a revised policy to the mechanical equipment arbitration process. The policy, the original policy and current policy was adopted by council in 1994 and it included two things. It included a mechanical equipment arbitration board of three members and it included a administrative option if you had a letter from the neighbor. Currently, the administrative or the mechanical arbitration equipment board only has one member. So it is a non-functioning body of the city, which in our opinion makes it an opportune time to revise the policy and to direct the appeal process to another already existing board of appeals, the Building and Property Maintenance Board of Appeals. So what the new policy is suggesting would be that there is an administrative route, an administrative approval route, which would include that the equipment that currently exists is an existing non-conforming, meaning that it would already be on the side of the house and not five feet from the rear mors portion of the building, which is what the ordinance, the zoning or the mechanical ordinance actually states. That the proposed equipment would be the same size, dimension, and capacity. So this would be both in the physical size and then in the BTUs. And again, a letter from the neighbor indicating their agreement is provided because neighbors change, neighbors' opinion about equipment changes. If those three things do not exist, then we would direct that person to the Building and Property Maintenance Board of Appeals. And the criteria used in granting a variance would include, among other factors, the likelihood that the proposed location will create a noise nuisance for the neighboring properties, the hardship or difficulty imposed upon the homeowner by compliance with the location requirements as written in the ordinance, the deterioration, if any, of the aesthetic appearance apparent of the premises as a result of the proposed location, and any other factor reasonably related to the health, safety, and welfare of the residents.
Thank you, Ms. Pike. Questions?
Thank you. So this is, this agenda item is just asking us to adopt this policy?
Correct.
It's not asking us to do amendments to 8-611, the ordinance?
The ordinance actually states that the appeal of the location requirements may be made to the board of appeals established by the city council for this purpose.
For this purpose. So it, it doesn't advise people looking at this ordinance what that board would be?
Right.
So-
It isn't specific.
It isn't specific. So if I'm looking at this as a resident, thinking about this, how do I know which board to make the appeal to? Do I have to contact, contact the city and-
You would.
Know about that. And I also want to be aware of looking at the ordinance because we only have the policies published anywhere for, you know, Joe Resin thinking about doing this work to look at and know what the rules are. We don't have anything about the administrative approval route separate from the appeal to the specific board. So I'm fine with doing the policy, but I also kind of would like to see 8-166 amended also to include the administrative approval route and those three conditions that have to be met. And also to address which board of appeals, that being now the mechanical equipment arbitration board would be here in the appeals if those three administrative criteria can't be met. That would be my preference, would be to amend the ordinance to in conjunction with the adoption of the policy, just to give more notice to people looking at the ordinances to know what the rules are, what their options are, if they decide to go this route.
Okay, thank you.
John?
Yeah, thank you. So a couple of things on the conditions for the administrative approval. Placement of the care unit is an existing non-conformant. Is there, thinking like a timeframe, right, of either if it's, like someone just had put it there or something like that and then are coming back later to get approval, right? Is that going to get caught, like just not having a permit? And that's going to get them blocked to-
So-
Approval through administratively, you know, kind of force them to the board if they don't get the permit or if something was done without contacting us?
So we had a long conversation about the ability to go back and look at permits within the department. And our system goes back to the year 2000.
Okay.
We don't always know if a permit was pulled. The homeowner doesn't always know if a permit was pulled if they're a new homeowner. All we know is that the equipment exists there on the side of the house. That's all we really know. So what the existing non-conforming assumes in this particular policy proposal is that at some point there was an approval for that because it's there.
Or it's just been there. It is if you're replacing the unit, it's already in that location, it's probably some 20, 25 years old, right?
It could be, yes.
So it's probably been there for that amount of time. Okay.
Yes.
And then also proposed equipment, same size, dimensions, capacity. I would add or smaller.
Okay.
Because I actually just had my AC unit replaced and it is smaller. So it's not the same size. So I'm making the assumption smaller is going to be less intrusive, less noise, things like that. And then the last one, letter from neighbor indicating their agreement, I would add a budding the unit. So it's clear which neighbor, just to be, you know-
Sure.
Pretty straightforward on that. All right. Those would be my suggestions for the policy. Thanks.
Just a couple of questions. Since, how long has it been non-existent or only with one board member on it?
Since July.
Since of this year?
Yes.
So you haven't had like a lot that's come in since then or?
We actually have several applications pending.
Okay. And how is that being addressed right now?
Currently, they're on hold.
Okay. And if a resident wants to do this and they have to get neighbor approval, is it their job to go to the neighbors or is there some specific notification that's given or?
It would be the neighbor's responsibility to get the letter and submit it with the application.
So what if a neighbor ejects? What is their recourse after that?
Then again, it would go before the Building and Property Maintenance Board of Appeals.
Is this going to be a burden on CDI right now or?
I mean, the burden is managing multiple boards. So any, any opportunity to streamline the appeals process, but- the appeals process but still provide or the opportunity for relief is a positive. These applications come before us all the time. I don't think it'll be any more than it is currently.
Mr. Vitale.
Yeah, first of all, I want to start out by saying that the two suggestions provided by my peers regarding putting the information out there for administrative approval and/or smaller are suggestions that I agree with. This is something that was discussed with, I am the city's representative on Building Maintenance Property Board of Appeals. This was suggested as a way to streamline. Frankly, when we had a different brick ordinance, it simply required it everywhere. We used to hear a lot of appeals and now that we've changed that ordinance, I don't get as many appeals. I feel a little guilty that I'm, you know, this is one of my committees and it doesn't get as much work as it used to, so I've actually offered to take on a few of these from CDI to free up some CDI time. So obviously I support this. There's only one other thing I might say too, is that I don't know if capacity is necessarily a reason to not make administrative approval. Many air conditioning units, you could have a two and a half ton and a two ton, they make one size of exterior unit and a different condenser. But I would not want to have to put somebody through this because they've got the same physical size going in, but they're going from two to two and a half. So, I think really just, the only thing that really should matter is physical size. Capacity, I don't think is really an argument. They all run less than they did back in the day, supposedly run quieter, probably be required to be changed more often as a consequence, but I don't think we need the capacity measurement in there.
Thank you, Mr. Vitale. Mr. Frederick?
Thanks, Mayor Protem.
Mayor?
Dave. So on the, Candace mentioned the ordinance change, we can't do that tonight, can we? That's got to be all in, you know, put out there and all that, so we would, that would come back to us at a later date, right? That's what I thought, so. And I'm good with, and we were talking about the change of size, right?
Physical size rather than capacity and/or smaller was Council, ultimate care and suggestion.
I would make a motion to that effect to approve the proposed policy for mechanical equipment arbitration with the notations and then instruct as part of that motion, administration come back to us with the appropriate ordinance opportunity change with everything you have to do with advertising it and all that.
Support.
We have a motion, we have a support. Ms. Rusi?
Yep, and thank you, Ron, for, I was thinking that with the ordinance too and also, I mean, given that we just talked about this and it would just be mirroring the policy we passed, perhaps we could just put under consent agenda when it's ready, so it doesn't have to be its own specific item, given its part and parcel of the adoption of this policy and already has been discussed.
Mr. Vitale.
Denise, is this something that we could put on our permit?
Yes, absolutely. In terms of the information?
So that would be another way to kind of, yeah, another way to kind of get the word out and, you know, let's do the ordinance change, but maybe let's put on the permit too because it'll probably get read a little more closely.
Sure. May I ask Mr. Mayor a point of clarification? Would the assuming Council votes affirmatively to the policy, would the policy be in effect immediately or after the ordinance change?
Immediate.
I guess it would be immediate, yeah.
Yeah, we got people booked.
Okay.
Pending.
Okay, anybody else? We got a motion, we got a second by Mr. Vitale, a motion by Mr. Frederick. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
All right, let's move on. We're going to Item 5A and that's bids, contracts, purchase orders. 5A is a request to approve the purchase of new personnel and evidence lockers for the new police department. The chief is here.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be here as always. Today, we're here to talk about several purchases for the new police building. The first 5A is the evidence and personal lockers. This went out to bid on BidNet. We received five bids total, I'm sorry, two bids total. One offered a second option that was available to do. The low, the difference in the price is $560 between the adjusted price of the lowest bidder and the second lowest bid. The products proposed have been reviewed by several of us that have gone to different agencies to look at the products. We're happy with the Casper product. It provides a lifetime warranty and a five-year warranty on, that's on the frame and then on the warranty on the moving parts is for five years. So, this is included in the soft cost budget. The soft cost budget was 226, this is slightly over at 2352392, but as you'll see as we go forward, there's going to be a significant savings if approved on one of the other items. So this 2% overage is within our policy and then also would be covered as we save more money on other products. So our recommendation for the lockers, for the locker room, the personal lockers for the officers, and the evidence lockers is for the Casper Corporation, option two.
Mr. Vitale.
Since this item does also include a second price including tax, and I would have actually thought the city exempt too, and we had a speaker who spoke on that tonight, could you explain to us why the city's paying tax on this? Why the confusion?
We're not buying the product. If we bought the product and had it installed, we would pay the sales tax, or we wouldn't have to pay the sales tax because the city's exempt. This other corporation is buying the product, they have to pay the sales tax that's passed on to us.
Other corporation, meaning our contractor?
Yes.
Cunningham Lim?
No. So this, in this case, it'd be Casper.
Or whoever the subcontractor is for that portion of the build.
Right. So they buy the product and have to pay tax and then that tax is passed on to us.
Okay, and in this case, the cheapest bidder, even with the additional tax, is still the lowest cost bidder?
It's slightly high, it's $560 and change higher.
Okay, but this, okay, does this integrate better with what we have or is there a reason? What's the supporting reason for?
It didn't include some of the, we wanted some electronic locks on some of the evidence lockers that weren't included in the SRS.
Okay, so there is a difference?
There is.
Okay.
Ms. Rusi?
Thank you, but the PO has issued to vendor Casper, so the PO from the city is to Casper, not to the contractor. So how can we say that this is being purchased by the contractor and we're issuing the PO for it, not to the contractor but to the company itself?
I believe they're going to do the installation as well, so they are the contractor as well.
Right, but we're paying, but we're buying this straight from the company, according to the PO at least, versus maybe Chris Mills?
Yeah. So my understanding from my years here and while I spoke with Mr. Ray.
Chris Ray, in case no one doesn't know.
If we're buying the product, the lockers and installing them, we're tax exempt because we're buying from Casper as the tax exempt operation. Casper is the corporation, but they're also the installer, so because they're the installer and not us, they're not tax exempt. And that came up in an audit years ago and I know this gentleman spoke, he said, well, we do it everywhere, but what our auditor just told us, I don't even know how many city managers go, this was the deal, because I'm sure all of you are aware, we talked about even doing projects where we would buy air conditioning units for city buildings, large items, so we're tax exempt and then give it to the contractor to install to try to dance around the tax issue. It was still a violation because we were still having that guy install it, not the city installing it.
That seems really stupid.
So.
But maybe, I mean, maybe, you said many city managers go, maybe we could check with our current auditors too about that, just seems very stupid.
I don't disagree, I think it creates a lot of confusion. At all these bids, some people include, I mean, there is a six-week window for people to call and ask, and I would have told them, include it because then we'll know what your numbers are separately. Nobody called and asked me about it, it's on the bid form, it's in the bid documents, it says include it. So if you're going to be the bidder and assume something that the instructions tell you not to do, then I say that's on the bidder for not emailing me or calling me within that six-week window that was afforded to them. But that's my understanding. I did refer to discuss with Bob before we made the recommendations, just to make sure that we didn't come up here and say we did it wrong and we are on the same minds, at least several weeks ago, we're on the same minds.
That was my understanding as well, based upon issues that we've had in the past. Perhaps we can get a confirmation and an opinion from our accountants on that matter.
And I guess I'll piggyback off of that too as well. The state of Michigan still says we are tax exempt, so they don't call it a sales tax. What they actually call it and we have to document it is a use tax. So it does even go down as a different tax, but as Chris mentioned, it is when anybody else installs it, we're still getting it technically sales tax free, we have to pay 6% use tax, which is the exact same thing.
But we have a sale, we have a state rep here, so maybe you can look into this issue and bring it up legislatively and get this cleaned up because this is a mess and it just doesn't make a lot of sense from a lot of perspectives. So I'm glad you stayed.
And for those who are watching, the fellow that just came up, his name's Chris Rayz and he is overseeing a lot of these police and fire.
ARPA.
What's that?
ARPA projects.
ARPA projects, including the police and fire. So, Ron? Or Mr. Vitale?
Yeah, so we have on here from the SRS, a BMH company, there looks like their bid 218,000 and then, including the sales tax, 229,000. Does that mean that someone from that company perhaps did submit the bid without tax, made the phone call, found out that they were, yes, include the tax, and then they did? I see Mr. Rayz is shaking his head. So kind of the scenario that he just described is actually what happened with the evidence lockers.
I believe that's correct. The sales tax was figured after the base bid was submitted and then that tax was added on.
Correct, and Casper put, there's a lump sum number, so I had to get their breakdown so we could see what those numbers were separately to compare the product number versus the install number.
So they asked the question, essentially?
No, I called them.
Or you called, okay.
To make sure that they include the sales tax. From talking to different folks, some said, well, I don't think their number includes tax. All these guys know each knows where the number should be, so I had to call the individual bidders to verify whether they had tax in their number or no tax in their number, so that we, I don't want us to get stung later, they come back, so, well, you got to, the city has to pay tax.
I understand that now for A, but you can probably see what's going to come for B. So, let's stay, yeah, let's stay on A for now.
Yes. Anyone else? John?
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to approve the bid award to Casper Corporation for the purchase of personal evidence and booking room lockers in the amount of 230,523 and 92 cents.
Support.
Supported by Candace. Motion by John. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Moving on to Item 5B, Agenda Item 5B, and that is the request to approve purchase of new high-density files for the new police department.
So a similar process occurred here with the filing system and plan, filing systems. This went out to bid on BidNet. The, these are going to be used in our records bureau, the evidence room, and the vault room, which is inside the evidence room. Five bids were received, the total of each are below. The difference in price in the low, between the low bidder and second low bidder is just over $629. Again, the products were reviewed. Sergeant Camel, who's in charge of our records bureau, did go to the East Point Court where at least one of these systems is used, so we know that that specific product that was observed there was not desirable. This is also covered in the soft cost budget. This is, comes in approximately 110,448 under budget, which goes along with Item 5A, that 40, 40, 500 difference in price. So this comes under budget, we recommend that we go with Casper Corporation.
Thank you, Chief. I guess the first thing I'd like to say is, this fellow came from Rochester, is there any way to verify what he was talking about, his numbers as far as his bid? He was saying it was wrong, obviously. Mr. Rayz?
I did not hear the, I was not in the room when he first started presenting, so I don't know what the question is about the numbers.
Thank you.
That was his.
He was just basically saying that his was, his bid's lower than what it appears to be. Yeah, for clarity, hold on.
Yeah, so the numbers I'm showing of what the numbers are, and obviously, I don't know what the gentleman said, this is his number and then I asked him to break it down for labor and the materials. And so, my understanding of his numbers that he gave me, I added the 6% tax to the product only and added his labor number to get this number. So, I don't know how much he's saying it's off by, but that's how I came up with that number.
Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, Chris, so when you were out in the lobby, the gentleman came up and stated that he did already knowingly put in the tax, knowing he would be responsible for paying it and put it in the price and that we wouldn't be able to raise the price and he just was assuming that that price was already baked in. So it would be his original price, which would be approximately the 79,87930, which is the price that he quoted, not the added 6% on to the equipment cost to make it the 83,92206.
Yeah, and I don't, I want to concur with that, there is emails and conversations about it, as well as if I'm not mistaken, and I'd have to look at his actual bid, on the contract form, I believe he made a notation in that contract that said, does not include sales tax and, and maybe he recalls writing that or not, he can state that tonight, otherwise I'll, and you can have probably in your thumb drives with all this, but I believe it's his document that he made that exception. So, when you make that exception, that is 180 degrees from what you just explained to me, that he didn't write in there, we will assume sales or use tax as part of this bid. There's an exception to the bid and that's why I asked the question about it. But I'll double-check that because it's been a couple of weeks since I actually looked at the paper form of it, but I can get that to you.
Mr. Vitale.
Is this something that if we tabled, that would cause an interruption?
I would make one other comment. The staff did look at the products, I wasn't with them, the two different products, and they were recommending the Casper product regardless of the price. So, when we put these out to bid, when I talked to various bidders about it, I said, they want to know if it's going to be low bid only, and I said, well, it's going to be low bid and quality because if you're going to just give us the low bid and things break down, we're not going to want to buy furniture or whatever the product is every five years. So all that is stated that the city can go with the non-low bidder and from the chief's staff, they followed up on the references that were given by the bidders and were recommending to me that they wanted to go with the second bidder.
So a high-density file system, is it what it sounds like, a big metal file cabinet?
A rolling system that they're going to use for these various tubs that they keep their.
I mean, this isn't a piece of software or anything like that. This is a hands-on.
It's going to fit in a room that's 20 feet long and 15 feet wide.
Gauge steel and things like that and ball bearings and all that that would be involved, so there's a palpable material difference in the product.
Potentially, yeah, for each product.
Okay.
Mr. Frederick?
Thanks, Dave. So, you said you went and looked at the other products at, or which product did you So, you said you went and looked at the other products at, or which product did you look at, Chief? Was it the, was it this one or the, or both items?
I did not personally go look. Sergeant Campbell went to the 38th District Court.
Okay.
That advantage has supplied, and in short, that was not the desired product.
Okay. Well, based on that, I mean, obviously, we want this to, everything to work and be top-functioning, right? So I'd make a motion to approve the bid to Casper Corporation for the high-density filing system for the new police department building in the amount of $84,551.89.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Burgess. Moved by Councilmember Frederick, seconded by Councilmember Linda Burgess. And Mr. Vitale?
I will go ahead and vote for this, and largely in the idea that we're still coming in on budget. But if we are going to make a decision that's based on product quality, I guess I'd wanna know a little bit more about that.
I mean, I have-
Well, I don't necessarily mean from you right now, I just mean as part of our package.
Gotcha.
What was the difference in price, Chief, again?
Between the Casper and then the ABS with the additional tax added in, the difference was $629.83.
$629 was the difference? Okay.
I was just gonna say, with the clarity of the notation that was made earlier, so anywhere from $629.83 to approximately $3,000 would be the difference. But it was significantly, the second lowest bidder was significantly lower than the $92,601, and the third bidder, $105,437, and $125,417. So, depending on how we view the results from earlier, it still was, as Chief Allen had mentioned, Heather Campbell did go out, and they did do a lot of research on these cabinets.
Okay. Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. And could you guess the information from the bids, the bids mills themselves that were being discussed that are on our thumb drive? I turned my thumb drive in already, but about the notation that Chris Rais had mentioned, you may have remembered. This is one of the deficiencies in the process, if we have thumb drive documents, which doesn't seem like anyone has them now at the meeting, and if questions come up, well, I'm trying to open my council packet, my 1,500-page council packet on my phone, which isn't, the PDF isn't really opening super good, and I don't think I can scan close enough and quick enough to get to it. And that's one of the issues with the thumb drive, is now questions arise based upon the papers on it, and we don't have them, and administration doesn't seem to have them either. And I don't think we have any place to plug in a thumb drive right now at the tables for trying to make this decision.
The documents on the thumb drive were numbered into thousands as well.
Yeah, it's just, it's difficult. I think, I would hope somebody would have them to look up in case questions come up. Maybe administration can have a nice paper copy sitting here, just in case, because it's kind of difficult when documents are being cited, and we don't seem to have them to check. And I have to look them up on my phone via 1,500-page PDF, and it's, thank you, this is just the handout, this isn't the documents themselves, so. No, I appreciate that, but it's, maybe somebody from administration should have the paper copies, too, just in case.
Mr. Rais, I just wanted to jump in one second here, 'cause I don't know, Chris, you said something about, can it wait two weeks?
Yeah. And I would also say, I mean, we could make a contingent, I suppose, on learning more about the quality discrepancies and learning more about the tax discrepancies. But I mean, if they, they are allowed to go with a second bid based on quality, so, kind of a moot point, but-
Yeah.
Okay, motion in order?
It's already out.
It's, yeah.
Oh, sorry, Ron and Linda.
Probably a roll call.
Yeah, let's take a roll call vote, please. Aye.
Councilmember Burgess?
Aye.
Councilmember Karen?
Aye.
Councilmember Rubello?
Aye.
Councilmember Rusi?
Nay, I'm conceptually fine with buying the cabinets, but just what the questions have arisen with the bid process, I can't vote for, vote for this at this time.
Okay, motion passes four to-
Also still me.
Councilmember Vitale?
Okay, Chris is okay.
And actually, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna vote no as well, I, you know, knowing that the police can choose based on quality, but my concern is over the bidding.
Four to two.
Motion passes four to two. Okay, let's move on to item 5C, request to approve purchase of new furniture for new police department. New furniture.
Again, these specs went out to bid on BidNet. We received eight bids that are listed for you. Partner House was the, we went to Partner House, and we sat on a lot of different chairs that day. Not the most exciting field trip in the world, but they did have a lot of different products for us to try out, and we did check out their chairs, tables, desks, all of the things that we're looking for. They ended up with the lowest bid, and we do recommend them. It's included in the soft budget, soft cost budget, and this comes in just under $10,000 under budget.
Move to approve.
Support.
We have a motion by Councilman Frederick, seconded by, was that Councilman Karen?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. Given it sounds like you were present for the chair-sitting field trip, question on the side chair versus the wire-stacking chair, given that's part of the recommendation? What, what would be the, the difference justifying the change in that?
It's a sturdier chair, and when we're dealing with our officers in the squad room or in the training room, and part of the goal with, with this training room is to host other agencies to come in for trainings, and then we get free spots for our officers to attend, so, part of it is, body armor and gun belts have, they take up space and they weigh, they have weight, so, these seem to be a bit sturdier. They're still movable, so they can be pushed to the side of the room if we need open space, but it was just a better all-around product.
No, I-
The fire chief has moved in.
Yeah, 'cause you guys have the same, you have the same one in 5D.
We have the same one.
Yeah.
I test drove it for two days at a class, and said, these are fantastic, why are we getting these wire-stackable chairs that are, they just don't look good, all that kind of, anyway. Two-day test drive, wonderful chairs. They sort of fit within the budget, so we, we said, we wanna make that happen, and they said they could make it happen.
Again, I guess, piggybacking off of a point made by Councilman Vitale in the previous one, if we're being asked on material, things like that, would be nice to have a little bit more, I guess, color on that in the memo itself, so we understand where the recommendation's coming from. We weren't there for the chair-sitting field trip or the file cabinet field trip or whatever, so we don't have that type of, of experiences, so we may not necessarily understand where the recommendation's coming from. If you tell us those things, that helps a lot compared to just seeing that you're recommending something else without the type, without the why reasoning and rationales behind it. So I know, usually, Sergeant Campbell includes that kind of stuff in a memo, and I kind of wish we had that for this, especially given that it seems to be experience-driven. But I have no problem purchasing the more durable, you know, chairs people will be seeing in these every day, but it would be nice just to have an idea coming into the meeting about what's driving the change in recommendation.
Right, okay.
Thank you, Candace. Mr. Vitale?
Yeah, actually, what I was gonna say is, maybe the other side of that same coin that Councilwoman Rusi, Sergeant Campbell does an excellent job of providing the color sometimes in a reason between purchasing one police car over another police car or something like that. That would've been good here. But actually, I wanted to compliment both departments for taking the time to visit the low bidder and still staying under budget by quite a bit, instead of just going to the next highest bidder, just by, you know, kind of increasing the quality on a handful of product, and still brought us in $10,000 under what was budgeted, so that was a compliment.
Thank you. I'll take it.
That's all.
All good? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you very much.
And while you're here, is there any, you got any, we can't, we won't hold you at any dates, but there's any estimated time of door openings for the police and fire station, you guys?
We have a meeting tomorrow morning with the construction management company and the architect. Last we spoke, two weeks ago, they're looking at early July, which is a little off from originally thought, but due to some underground issues that were encountered, some weather issues, it's not, not, I guess, unexpected, so.
Okay. And anything on the fire, chief, back there? Christmas time?
Yes.
So we might be having, you guys might be having Christmas dinner in there? Wonderful.
It was Thanksgiving dinner.
Okay, let's move on to, thank you, thank you, chief.
We have to vote.
We have to vote. We're going to go to-
We have to vote then.
Huh?
We have to vote.
And we already voted.
We did.
Yeah, we did, we voted six.
Six to zero.
It wasn't a roll call like the other one.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay, let's move to item 5D, a request to approve purchase of new furniture for the new central fire station. Chief?
Yes, sir. Good evening, everyone. So a lot of what Chief Allen said, we had the bid go out, we've got the responses, we went to a couple of different places, we test drove some furniture, and then, so for us at the fire station, it's a little bit more pressing, as you already brought up, the timing is, is sooner, so we're wanting to get that moving along. And so, what we're actually requesting tonight is a partial fulfillment of the bid from Partner House. So that's why ours is in the amount of the $55,724.22 for station furniture.
Thank you, chief. Mr. Karen?
Thank you. So, this particular bid item was actually included with the police furniture as well, right?
Yes, sir.
It was all one package that went out?
Correct.
So we approved the police side, so you separated out the fire side? And that's right?
For this process.
For this process, okay.
But yeah, the bid was the same, and many of the same pieces, we're getting the same items.
Right, okay. So, so, so what's the backup plan for, 'cause, you know, I emailed you earlier today asking you why the lesser amount was being asked for, and that you're leaving out the, you know, furniture for conference room, dining tables, as well as some office chairs. So what's the backup plan to get those later?
So I'm gonna start-
A different design, or to get them cheaper, or what are you thinking?
No, the big, you look like you want to say something, Mr. Lent. Sorry. The biggest thing is, I'm, I'm gonna turn my buildings people loose, and we're gonna start finding what we want. The short answer is, I don't know if Mr. Lent is happy about this, I, your chief, I'm a bit of a pain to the city manager.
So, but one of the biggest rationales is where the police is almost getting all brand-new furniture everywhere. The fire department is reutilizing a lot of their existing furniture and bringing it over. You can kind of see there's some furniture that is being relocated. The training room's brand-new, so it's all brand-new furniture that they're not moving. Some of the other rooms, they are bringing over some of their chairs and some of their different stuff. That's why everybody does need a new desk, they want it all uniform. But there was a lot of individual needs to be able to have the furniture fit what they're bringing over, so you don't have, look like it's mismatched in pieces with what they're bringing over. So, everything that they, we, we put in here today has been fit out and awarded and will fit, because it's all brand-new areas. There are some areas where they want to be able to more match some of the furniture that's coming over, and then we'll determine if we stick with still purchasing this equipment and/or if they can find something cheaper that does match some of the equipment to bring it over. So it's, it's not finalized yet, it's just a holding pattern to find out-
You're looking to use, have some reuse of existing, and then once you figure that out, then figure out what additional furniture was gonna be needed.
Correct, right, okay. Yeah, so we know for sure, they never had a conference room before. So we know for sure, the, the biggest purchase here is all the new conference tables and chairs for the, the training room, all the desks for all the offices, but then the rest was, okay, hey, what are we doing with the conference rooms? Do we have some tables in the kitchen? We have stuff that we're moving over. What are we moving over? How is it going to match? And as Jamie would say, they have some older material, he didn't wanna go with a modern look, within also, I would say, different look of what we're bringing over.
And I'm looking between the, I'm just staring at two different numbers, like, if we were to buy everything, it's gonna be $82,613 versus a $55,724 that's being recommended. So basically, whatever the backup is, gonna be less than $27,000.
Correct.
By that, okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lent. Ms. Rusi?
Moved to approve.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Rusi, seconded by-
I'm sorry, I did, um-
More?
Well, there, we, we kind of did a two-for in there in the, in the bid that Mr. Rais and I had in there. So there's gear locker, but it's, it is technically under 15, and it's, but I didn't know if that needed to be part of the motion or-
It is part of the, it is part of the recommended motion, so my motion's for the recommended motion.
Sounds like we're getting, we're starting to get down to nitty-gritty here.
Making a lot of progress, we appreciate it. Yep, pretty soon, we're gonna have stuff to put inside it, so.
Fantastic.
They took the brass poles away today to get those ready to go for the new building, so it's exciting.
Mr. Vitale, did you want to say something?
Alls I was gonna add was that I do remember the discussion about fire department reusing some furniture, so this isn't anything new sprung on us, and I appreciate their willingness to be thrifty.
Okay, we had a motion by Councilwoman Rusi, and it was seconded by Councilman John Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you all.
Moving on, thank you, thank you very much. Item six, the consent agenda.
Moved up for support.
Motion by Councilman John Karen, supported by Councilman Ron Frederick. Motion passes six to zero.
You have to call for the vote.
We're gonna actually vote, babe.
I'll call for the vote, I'm sorry. No one pulled anything, okay.
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, there's zero. All right, let's move on to item six. We already passed seven. Updates and follow-ups? You have any updates or follow-ups?
Yes, we do. We have, Ms. Rusi suggested revising ordinance section 16-225D3A to reference the specific section. Abby did complete on 9/3/25 and submitted. Ms. Rusi requested the removal of the library as a posting location for ordinance notices while the library is closed. Abby also completed that on 9/3/25.
What's the replacement, please?
Oh, she just, she just removed it.
So we're posting at St. Lucy's, because that's police and fire admin and City Hall and Civic Arena?
Yeah.
Okay, good, thank you.
Mr. Karen requested an explanation regarding the Jefferson Masonic Pump Station payment and reimbursement. The Jefferson Masonic Pump Station was completed in early fiscal year '25. The project costs and PO were for $253. The total paid so far on that project has been $234. We are waiting on the final payment for the retainage to pay for the project. We are holding off, as the council is aware, we had to wait for the transformer to get there, then hook up, and then be able to, before we actually disperse the final, final payment and the retainage. So, however, the full $253 did not need to be carried forward in fiscal year '26, only what remained on the PO, so that has been corrected and amended going forward. Mr. Rubello requested advertising the EV charger locations. Hannah and Steve are working on concepts for an SCS EV charging commercial. And then Ms. Rusi requested information on contractual obligations related to EV chargers. The EV chargers and brides and veterans are through a cost and profit sharing agreement with Charge EV. The agreement is for a 10-year period. The chargers at Kite were initially, were initiated through a carbon reduction grant through SimCOG, which transferred to the NEVI funding through MDOT. Once they are started, the chargers- Once they are started, the chargers will be the responsibility of St. Clair Shores.
So it's not a 10-year thing like the other two? It's not part of that type of program? Okay, good, that's, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Karen requested installation of reflectors on the new guardrail. The guardrail reflectors...
Which piece of it?
So, yes. So we're gonna be by the meeting here. At the time, the guard reflectors have been ordered, and they will be installed by DBW after they arrive. The reason that is, is unfortunately, we did have an unfortunate incident where an individual hit the guardrail, so we will be replacing the guardrail, and then restoring the guardrail reflectors.
I was just gonna mention something on that. I don't know if everyone read the police report on that. What an unfortunate time to have a seizure, heading into a turn at 3:00 in the morning. I'm, I'm also glad that your officer did report the seizure condition to the Secretary of State.
Mr. Vitale, going back to the guardrail though, we are very fortunate that guardrail was there, because if that car would have continued to go on, it would have been on to potentially oncoming traffic into Harper and/or hitting the clock and done more damage as well.
Or one of the businesses, correct.
So Mr. Vitale requested an update on the legal status of Shores Theater. The owner of Shores Madrid Theater closed on construction financing on August 28th. He met with a contractor on the metal panels the following day. He said the materials would take three weeks for shipping and one week to install.
What was the official process for restarting the building permits?
I will have to pass that on to CDI.
I mean, certainly I don't want to see it uncompleted, but there must have been something administratively...
Well, his building permits are expired, his trade permits, he has been getting inspections, so those continue to be current. So he will need to re-up his building permit, but other than that, that's really what he has.
Okay, make sure he's aware.
That is it. You good? All righty, let's move on to comments by individual council members. Ms. Candace Rusi?
Thank you. Just two quick things. First off, the Women's Civic League asked me to announce the upcoming Meet the Candidates Night, which is a week from today, September 22nd, Monday, in council chamber, 7:00 PM, and once again is emceed by Judge Merk, who always does a fabulous job. Come and ask the current candidates for city councils some questions, and help educate yourself as a voter. And again, that is 7:00 PM, September 22nd, on Monday, right here in City Hall. And my second thing, just want to say, quick congratulations to the Miss St. Clair Shores Scholarship Page and for their, once again, is always fantastic, Lot St. Clair Art Festival at VMP over this past weekend, always well attended. It's a big fundraiser for the Miss St. Clair Shores Scholarship Program, and they always do a fabulous job. And one of the neat things is just the, I think, the variety of different vendors they have. If you want jewelry, if you want clothing, if you want household items, things upon, just so many different types of items, so many different types of art, and they always do a really great job in selecting the vendors and making sure there's a great selection and variety. There, there's always something you can find. I got these earrings, so, and along with some other things. So I did my circle, I, I spent my money, and it was a very nice Saturday morning even with a little bit of showers in the beginning. I know it cleared up, and everyone had a great time. So thanks again to the Miss St. Clair Shores Scholarship Page and all the vendors, all the attendees. It was another great event in St. Clair Shores. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Rusi. Mr. Karen?
Thank you. Just one sad item for tonight. Lynn Bellhorn, who was a member of the Dog Park Committee for many years, was the past liaison, Councilman Rabello is the current liaison for that committee, but she had passed away this last week. She was a daily fixture at the Dog Park, and her one dog, Mickey, little Pomeranian mix, greeted everybody as they came in. And the other thing that Lynn did is that she seemed to be the regular dog watcher for everybody else. Like if somebody was going out of town, she would, she would take their dog in while they're out of town, at her house. And she already had like, she had two other dogs as well, so she was always adding to that mix for that short period of time. So she always stayed within the ordinance, but, but she was a great pleasure to serve with on that committee. Sad for her loss. She's survived by her husband Ken, who's still St. Clair Shores resident, as well as her daughter, so sad news, but she would be greatly missed and appreciate all the years that she gave us on the Dog Park Committee. And that is all.
Thank you, Mr. Karen. Mr. Frederick?
Thanks, Dave. First off, the library's closed, as we all know, just going through some renovations. So I just want to reiterate, you can go to scslibrary.org, because we are still checking out books. They'll explain how to, it'll explain how to do that on the website. And some of the other online resources that you can use off your computer are Libby, tutor.com, Transparent Language, and Hoopla. And you can always go to Libcoop, which is librecop.net, and there'll be more stuff from some of the other libraries. And we're, we're excited, I guess I should ask under, if we can get some updates for the next meeting, dusting on where we're at, and maybe, maybe the committee should do a quick walkthrough, see how, how, how much dust we have in there, so. All right, and then, and then lastly, I got several calls from residents regarding, you know, some of the stuff that's happened in, in the country this past week, and, you know, I really didn't want to say anything, because it's, you know, I'm, I'm just torn between some of this, but, you know, I remember back in the 60s, our nation warned our leaders, whether it was President Kennedy, Martin Luther King, you know, Governor George Wallace, Robert Kennedy, you know, Ronald Reagan later on, those assassinations and attempts shook the entire generation, leaving scars we kind of still feel today. Scars that were kind of ripped open last week, you know, back then it was our leaders who were targets, voices of change silenced by violence. But now the tragedy has reared its head in the form of disagreement and has spread to our neighborhoods, our schools, our everyday lives today. It's not just presidents and thought leaders, it's children in classrooms, families in grocery stores, neighbors walking down the street. The weapon may be the same, but the scale is far greater. Violence has moved from rare national tragedies to daily local heartbreak, and we cannot allow this to become our new normal. Please do not let this become our new normal, let's all stay vigilant. Just as a generation once stood up against hate and demanded change, we must now stand together and say enough. I'm a gun owner, and I'm saying, you know, no more guns to people who, to put them in the hands of hate and mental illness. I believe in the Second Amendment, and I believe in the First Amendment, but we can't be silent in the face of this violence. The cycle must end with us. Thanks for letting me editorialize a little bit in Go Lions. That's all I have, Dave.
Mr. Vitale?
Yes, we're ready. I have a couple of things here. I think this is resolved, and resident did seem to express that they were out there at 11:30 on Sunday night, and I also want to make sure that Councilman Karen gets credit on that too, because he was also on that thread with the lighting issues, but, you know, that also brought out a lot of other people saying, the high school lights have been blasting in my yard, and I did ask them for pictures, I don't know, maybe they didn't see my reply. And I also want to say that for residents, Facebook is not a reliable means to communicate with us. It's all based on algorithms, and if I see it or not, or if I have time that day to spend on social media. So, you know, reach out with email, that is really the surest and best way to do it, but if you've got issues, there exist city ordinances, do not revert to shooting the lights out, as was suggested, let's not do that. There are city ordinances, I've worked on this issue with other residents, we've always been able to resolve it, so, and it looks hopefully like it's resolved here. So good work to, compliment to Norma, I know she went out and looked at that after, so. Next slide, please. Lot of construction work going on from Consumers Energy on Little Mac Gas Station replacement. I was out at Bethel Lutheran, actually, compliments to staff, I think I had the, everybody, had all the shooters there, who were reviewing the issues there. And just a reminder, I didn't express it then, but let's find out what Consumers' payment warranty is, because we do have sidewalk replacement requirements and assessments that are done, and, you know, I don't want to hear that the last piece of cement lasted 50 years, and this Consumers one broken too. So let's just make sure we get something in writing on that. Next one. Okay, if that church looks familiar, here it is without construction. While I was there, I was made aware that on Friday, September 26th, they will be having a jazz concert with Michael Hewlett at Bethel Lutheran Church. Looks like a saxophone.
Hey, you?
Big saxophone. Yeah, I pointed out that I don't think there are any palm fronds, their last one, so that picture must have been taken elsewhere. But, so just to let everyone know, a jazz concert at Bethel Lutheran Church and a free will offering to the church. And, you know, it's interesting that, that Ron brought that up, because the situation with, you know, what happened in Utah and the assassinations and things like that, I was weighing whether or not I would speak on that as well. And, you know, I thought to myself that, you know, Ron is our guy up here who's associated with the Macomb County Democrats, and I'm a person that's been invited to the Trump Rose Garden for a signing ceremony. So it's, in some respects, opposite ends of the political spectrum, yet Ron is one of the people I work the best with here on council, that I enjoy council with the most. So it does not have to get to that stage. I think a lot of it depends on if you grew up in an era where there was a cell phone and you had to react to something every three seconds. I didn't grow up that way, and I'm trying to make sure my kids don't grow up that way. And it has rewired a lot of brains, unfortunately. So there's, there's no need for this. People can differ on policies. I've voted differently than every person up here in some manner, and I don't take any of it at home with me, I compartmentalize it, and it's city council business, and that's it. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Vitale. Ms. Linda?
Yeah, I also struggled with, if I was gonna say something tonight about it, and I actually wrote a little bit, you know, we stand in sorrow every time we hear about any violent act. And when violence comes out of opinions, that's really not us being very good humans. So I, I call for unity. My heart goes out to the families who are grieving right now, to those that were injured, to those affected by senseless acts of violence, the school shootings, Charlie Kirk. So we stand together in sorrow, all of us do. This is not who we are. Who we are is Americans, that our differences lead to bloodshed, and it's crazy, but we need to work, it starts at home. We need to work on safer, more peaceful communities, to value each other, value everybody's life, everybody is deserving of respect and dignity. And so I just want to take a moment to remember those that were lost, and to offer prayers for them. Couple of the things, I'm really excited about the meet and greet next, coming up here, that's gonna be really a, a great thing. I remember when I was sitting up here, how nervous I was that day. But it's a great time to come out to listen to the candidates that are running for city councils, so make sure you come out on September 22nd. Also, get my stuff together here. The St. Isaac Jokes Fall Festival is this Saturday, I'm very excited about it, I'm on the committee for, for the Fall Festival, and it's gonna be Saturday, September 20th, and it's gonna be from 1:00 PM to 11 o'clock at night. And we are going to be having cornhole contests there, and there's going to be some taste wine, or beer tasting, like a beer area, you can taste different kinds of beer. There's gonna be a really cool kid's zone there. We're also gonna have some reptiles that, who is it?
Gross Point Zoology.
Gross Point Zoology is bringing their reptiles.
Sponsored by Z's Pub.
Sponsored by Z's Pub. And what I'm really excited about is we're having vendors this year, so we've got 18 vendors coming out, so you can pick and choose the things you want to look at and do, they're gonna have the beer tent, they're gonna have, I know the sixth, or the eighth graders are having a big bake sale, and it's all supporting for a beautiful church in our community. So coming out this, coming Saturday. Also starting on Saturday is the Cool Cities Shortober Fest, which is gonna be very exciting as well. We've got 32 different bars and restaurants in the community that are part of that, and so you want to go to www.scscoolcity.com, where you can learn more information about all of the different restaurants and bars that are participating. You go visit it there, you kind of do a picture of the QR code, gets registered in that you went there, and the prizes, last time I announced, I didn't know exactly what they were gonna be, but the prizes that night are going to be, one grand prize, you just have to go participate to at least three of them, get put in for the drawing, and it's gonna be a $500 gift card, assorted gift cards. Second prize is gonna be 300 of assorted gift cards. Third prize is 200, and then for the fourth prize, we're gonna give away actually 20 $100 gift cards to various restaurants. So it's gonna be a really good, fun time, and you can also check us out on Facebook, Cool City Facebook page as well. And, yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Burgess. Well, Ron?
I just have one more thing that I need to mention, just, the Kiwanis Club is doing a Bike Fest.
Oh, yeah.
On, on Saturday. Thanks, John. And it's gonna be at, at Kite Monroe, it'll be, it'll be a bike through the, through the shores, over to Blossom Heath, and then back, and there'll, there'll be some t-shirts involved, and I think it's like an $18 registration fee. But all of the proceeds go to Cops for Kids, so it's a really great fundraiser for, you know, some folks that really, you know, help out a lot of kids during the holidays, so that's gonna be this Saturday, again, in the morning, I think, registration's at like 8:30, 9 o'clock, something like that, and we'll all be out there to cheer everybody on, and who knows, maybe even ride a bike, we'll see, but...
I want, I want a bike one year, I get Bike Fest.
I think I remember you winning that bike.
We could ride a bike right through the St. Isaac Jokes Fair, probably.
Let's do it.
Ms. Rusi?
You started with us. You started with me, Dave.
Okay, we're all done now. Rattled them through.
You have a second chance.
I could do mine again if you want, but I think we're...
No, that was a short one, so, okay. All righty. City managers report.
No report.
No report today? Okay, audience participation, do we have any, come on up. Carl, you're right there.
Hello, everyone, how you doing?
Good.
My name's Carl Schwarzwelder, I live in St. Clair Shores. On behalf of myself, I want to commend you all for having the courage to say what you say tonight, while the events of the past week. We all need to get back to a place of treating each other with respect and dignity, no matter what we think. Moving on from that, I'm also a member of the St. Clair Shores Activities Committee. I want to thank the city council and our Parks and Rec Department for all the hard work that they put in this year, getting our concerts done in the park, despite all the torrential rains we had. I know the last night, we had Captain Fantastic, and he had gotten rained out like three times the year before, and I think twice the last year, and there was a 1% chance of rain, I was told that night, that he finally got his show in, but we got it in. And we also have a lot more going on as far as music at the social district, so please, everyone, don't think this is the end, we can go down to the social district and hear some music down there. Oh, there's three more? Three more. I want to commend Councilwoman Linda Burgess and her husband for their sponsorships, Trader Todds, who helped us out at the park this year with our concerts, Michael Agnello Jewelers, and Little Blue Book. And without them, we couldn't get these things done, so I appreciate you all very much. Lastly, we have still a lot more coming up. The Activities Committee will be doing their Halloween Fun Fest at the end of October, so go call Parks and Rec for that. Councilwoman Rusi and Mr. Karen, both do a tremendous job at that every year, and we appreciate that too. And our tree lighting will be coming up too, in December, so that'll be in the early part of December. And again, I thank you all for what you did this year, and without everybody showing up every week to the concerts and to the social district, there'd be no point in us doing these things, so thank you all again for your time. Have a blessed night, everyone.
Thanks, Carl.
Thank you, Carl. Next, do you sign in for...
Do you want to sign in before?
Yeah, you come up and talk, and then sign in.
My name's Gary Hendricks, I live on Harmon, and originally I was here with a couple of my neighbors, and we had a concern with the approach that's going in for Grobels that's coming out onto Harmon. Now, we did some research, and my understanding is I'm basically... Now, we did some research, and my understanding is I'm basically just talking a mute case. My neighbor did go out and get fifty-two signatures on a petition, because their house, the cars come straight out, the headlights are gonna be hidden right in their living room window, and I live in the lot right next to it. And I'm just mainly just stating this, a few of you know me. Fourteen years ago, I did the inspection on that parking lot. I was, I used to work for Chris Ray's, and I did the catch basin structures, the rating, the taps to our storm sewer, the city storm sewer, and also the, the grease traps that were tapped into the sanitary on Little Mac. And when I did the inspection, I had asked Liz, you know, well, what about the, all the paving, and it was only halfway paved, the rest stayed gravel. And I didn't own the house that I own now until two years later. Well, I asked her, you know, what about the wall? She said, well, we'll make them put it in later. Okay, well, it still hasn't been put in. So I'm just making comments on this, okay? Because as neighbors, we're concerned, you know, we already get a lot of traffic during the school season from the Harmon School. And then, the second thing is, I came in, there was early voting this year. Now, I'm a hat wearer, and you can see why. But I came in to do, because I'm retired from the city, and I came in to do some business with Cheryl at the Finance Department for my health insurance, and I happened to, without even realizing it, I had a certain hat on. Okay, well, before you know it, I'm standing at the counter waiting for Cheryl, and I believe it might have been the city clerk, but a young lady came up to me and told me to take my hat off. I said, I'm not here campaigning for anyone, or for anything, or against anyone, or against anything. I'm just here conducting my business. Well, Cheryl was polite enough to say, come on, Gary, and we went out the back of City Hall and did our business. So I would just like to voice that, is it possible that City Hall, since it's a place to conduct business, you know, permits and City Hall, City Council meetings, could the precinct, the voter precinct be moved so that somebody like me accidentally walks in with something, the city clerk's not, you know, coming, coming down on me? So those are just my comments, and I didn't know if that was something that Ms. Rusi would, that I should have brought to next week's meet, the council meeting, but it's something that I'd like for you to give some consideration to, because I really didn't do it on purpose, but it ended up like that. And I wasn't coming in to try to be political at all. I just wanted to conduct my business. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hendricks, and thanks for all your wonderful years of service for the city. I, I know who you are.
I worked for Chris for fifteen.
Yeah, I know.
And then various departments, water, sewer, DPW, parks.
All right, uh, next, the, next item here. Oh, we got another fella. Okay. More people, okay.
Might want to ask, you know, if they want to line up like it does?
Come on up.
My name is David Masha, at three oh two eight-five Rosebrayer Street, St. Clair Shores.
And I'm Arson Seepack, three zero two nine zero Rosebrayer.
We come in together because we are neighbors. He lives on, we're on Rosebrayer, he lives on the north, or the, across the street, and I live on the other, the south side. And, yep. And, uh, we're here on the behalf of the residents, the neighborhood, the community, and the family that we all are. Over the years, I, I moved in in seventy-nine, Martin, some years, two thousand nine, or two thousand eight. So I've been there almost thirty years, and we enjoy St. Clair Shores. However, the need that we have at this time is our street sewer drain floods when it rains. It happens once a year, it's been happening since I've lived there. This particular rain, the last one on July seventeenth, everybody is aware of it, we all experienced it. It was, it flooded our basement four to five inches of water. We bailed for about two hours outside and to get the water out of the basement. We, we, because it happens often, didn't have much damage. A floor rug was damaged. I, I did present pictures to the, to some members of the council, and, um, but it was sewer water this time, and it had a bad smell. And, um, as a, as a resident, I wanna know, one, what we're doing about it, as, as a member of the council of the St. Clair Shores, and, um, also, I would like to know what we're doing about it, and what is a short-term fix, and what is a long-term fix? Or have you guys not addressed this at all at my location or other locations throughout St. Clair Shores? I know, um, our street flooded, but I know a lot of streets flooded in St. Clair Shores. And now I'm gonna let Martin speak, because he's more on the construction side of the business, I'm more of the management side of the business, so I'll let Martin explain what happened in his house.
So there, I, I would want to clarify, there is two different issues. One, our street gets flooded frequent, frequently, every big rain, the street have at least full of water, always, and I got videos and numbers of pictures of these events. Plus, since two thousand and eight, when I live in the house, I've been flooded at least three times, I can prove that, I got videos, I got pictures. Every time the sewer backs up, the sewer is connected to, I believe, the, um...
Storm.
Storm. And every time we get water on the street, I got water in my basement. Last one, it hit me with over forty thousand dollar, uh, you know, loss, and I got only five thousand from the insurance, because they not giving me anymore. So I would like to fix that.
Thank you.
And I try to help my neighbor as well, because they've been flooded, I got the next-door neighbor flooded, and there's number, number of houses which have been flooded on the same street. And this continues over and over. I got, I can prove it, I got pictures, I got videos. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't, did you, I don't know if you signed in or not? If you did?
Thank you, thank you, council, appreciate it.
So, i- if, if we could set a meeting up with you, with, uh, should we do it with Ms. Pike, or?
Just, so, um, go ahead and put your information there, I'll be in reach with you, we can set up a meeting, I can give you all the information on all the stuff that we do here, and then a little bit of information, too, on the street flooding and the restrictor plates, just to be able, because ultimately, when the streets flood, we're trying to keep the water out of the basements. That's ultimately the goal. So there are some streets, and I don't have to look into exactly where you live, that do have restrictor flood things, so the water doesn't go in the sewer, which then backs it up. So there's a lot that we do, and I would more than wel- welcome you guys sitting in, myself and the DPW Director, to give you an infrastructure information on what you can do as well.
Thank you, that'd be much appreciated.
Yep.
That's good, David.
Yeah, thank you.
If, for the folks that are gonna speak, if you could come up and, and sign in, that'd be great. Thank you. You can, uh, come up and speak first, and then you, you sign, okay, you're gonna go? All right.
Hi, everyone. I will, I'll speak, and then I'll, I'll sign in. My name is Jennifer Oresti, some of you I know, um, thanks for always giving us time for public comment. I'm sorry, I'm not sure what was discussed here, I'm coming right from work today. But I did want to raise this issue. We come to, to you, our elected officials, with cause for concern. What is happening nationally and at the federal level is hitting us locally here at home. It is the SARTU Hispanic Heritage Month today, and it was brought to my attention that there was a gentleman who works in St. Clair Shores, who was brought into ICE, who was in a detention center, and, um, I can't stand by while people in the community that look like me are unfortunately taken off of our streets, seemingly doing nothing wrong. And, uh, we were, we have heard that this individual was taken by police and then brought to an ICE detention center. We have heard that there is no police report for this matter, and so I just feel that it's particularly important to bring to you all in this space, and then also the public space, where, um, our residents can be informed of this as well, because this is a large cause for concern. Our residents deserve to feel safe, and, um, I can't, I can't stand by while, while I know that people are being rounded up off the streets, and I, I don't wanna see that happen in my city. So we are here tonight to address that concern, bring it all to you. I'm gonna let Karen speak a little bit more, because she has a prepared statement. Thank you, Karen.
Good evening, my name's Karen O'Keefe, and I live here in St. Clair Shores. I really appreciate all of your service to our city. This is the first time that I've addressed the city council. I have been impressed by the professionalism and responsiveness of our local law enforcement in my experience, but I was really troubled to hear of this case that Jen mentioned. There was an officer that approached a worker, a contractor, who we understand was here in the city, sitting in his truck at the place where he was supposed to work, waiting for the business owner who he was supposed to work for. Somebody saw him, my guess is due to racial profiling, called the police. The police showed up, he was, I believe, just sitting in his truck. They found out that his driver's license was expired, and then they called in ICE, and he was taken by Border Patrol authorities to a private prison over three hours away. And as was mentioned, no police report was fired. Local police should focus on community safety and welfare. Seeing police call in federal authorities over trivial things strikes fears in the heart of many of our neighbors and workers, including many people with legal status. Anyone who keeps up with the news knows that there are people who are here lawfully in the US, including even US citizens, who have been erroneously detained and even separated from their families. Cities have been successfully sued when local police wrongly detain US citizens. Local police enforcing immigration law puts our city and us taxpayers at risk financially. And involving local police and federal immigration, particularly over minor issues, is also bad for public safety. People don't wanna report crimes to police or serve as witnesses if they fear that they or the people they care about might be subjected to ICE detention as a result. In addition, some people might attempt to flee if they think a police interaction might lead to them being ripped away from their families. This puts everyone, including our police officers, at risk. I strongly urge that our city stop, police department, stop calling in federal authorities unless they're required to do so, and if this alarming practice continues, at a minimum, there needs to be a paper trail. We need to have police reports when this kind of thing happens. In addition, local police should be required to offer to allow a phone call to loved ones if this continues to happen. Imagine how terrifying it would be if your spouse, or if you were a child, your parent was disappeared with no trace. That is happening, and tragic consequences could result. Children of single parents could come home from school to an empty home, pets could be abandoned in their homes and die of hunger or thirst. I urge you to end the practice of calling in federal authorities over minor issues, and if you ignore this, council, please, at a minimum, ensure transparency, including a police report or other record, and notification of loved ones. I appreciate your time and your public service.
Thank you.
I feel like most of it's been covered. My name is Chris, um, I live also, like, nine in Harper, um, been here for several years. Yeah, immigration's a pretty important issue for me. My understanding with a gentleman who was detained and sent to ICE, he had a family here, um, five kids, um, mixed family, uh, so some of them have legal status, some of them do not. Sounds like he will be deported. But again, he was just showing up to work, right? So, um, this is a family that's been ripped apart, this is happening every day. You know, immigration's been a critically important issue for me personally, because I have a very complicated family. And, you know, I, I, all of my friends are, are immigrants, all of them are at risk, quite frankly. We're in a weird situation right now, where people with legal status are being ripped away. People are losing everything right now, and we don't need to be a part of that. The Supreme Court this week declared that it was okay to racially profile, but I think as a city, we can do, do better. I think as the police department, we should not be doing that. I think that should be officially public, uh, policy of the police department. I don't know what, what more I can really say about this, like you said, but it's something that affects everyone. You know, uh, citizens have been captured for up to three months and sent into ICE detention centers, and I know that that's not this city's concern, but when we are disappearing people and without even a police department, we need to have a policy in place where at least if we're contacting other agencies, there is a paper trail. My understanding is when this person was taken, they had no way to find out where they had even ended up. They contacted the city of police, the city police did not have a report to refer to, they just didn't acknowledge that the incident even occurred. And so this person was missing for three days before they finally found out what happened. So, um, we, we just think we, we can do better, and I don't know what action we can take as, uh, you know, what, what you guys can do to help support this incident, but it's just troubling, and I think we can do better.
Thank you.
I don't have much to add, I'm Brenda Coyle, and I'm also St. Clair Shores resident. Yeah, it, you know, it bothers me that this was somebody going to their work. I mean, last year, I had a contractor do some work at my house, and I noticed a lot of his workers, you know, there were some that didn't speak English, they were still respectful, they did their, a great job, so I wonder how this is gonna affect contractors in our city. It's hard enough sometimes to get any work done, but, you know, by local contractors, but, you know, this is gonna make it even tougher. Plus, I worry about, you know, we do pay enough in taxes right now, that if, if there are lawsuits by actions like this, you know, that result, then that's gonna be spread across, you know, all the residents and their taxes. So, and thank you all for listening to us, and thank you for, you know, all the work that you do.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Karen Cosley, I also live on Colony Street, um, in St. Clair Shores. I also have, um, a lot of immigrants in my family. We all, sitting here, are immigrants. We all came, have, have relatives not from this country, unless we are indigenous. I was married to a Canadian, and I fear for him, he's still my best friend. I fear for him on a daily basis, even though he is here legally. When I heard about this man that happened in my city, I was so broken-hearted to find out that he's minding his own business, and we don't know, because there is no police report, we don't even know if he was legal or not. We don't know if he was supposed to have been, you know, if, if he even, they even had a right to take him, because there was no report. We cannot get a report, and that is really concerning. This city can do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody signed in over there?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, well, we have a, I guess we're going to overtime here. Mayor's comments. I just, thanks for the opportunity to be able to sit here in the middle as the mayor pro tem tonight. Learned a lot of stuff. You gotta learn to keep your head on a swivel, and, and look for pens. I don't see pens too, too easy. So, I thank you for the opportunity to be able to do this. Mayor Walby will be back in, in two weeks. And...
Three.
Three weeks? Are we got three weeks from now? Three weeks. So, that's, that's all I have. I mean, the city of St. Clair Shores here has been a wonderful place. Especially over the past week, there's been a lot of stuff. And, we know we, we have some issues that we gotta fix. But, I think we're gonna be able to do it. And, we just move on, and we keep moving forward. And, I'm glad to be part of it. And, thanks to everyone for coming. So, with that, we'll have a, entertain a request to meet in a closed session.
I will move to meet in closed sessions, permitted by State Statute MCLA 15.268, statute 8H.
Support. All in favor?
Roll call.
We're gonna roll call vote?
Yep.
Okay. Roll call vote, Abby.
Uh, Councilmember Rusi?
Aye.
Councilmember Karen?
Aye.
Councilmember Burgess?
Aye.
Councilmember Frederick?
Aye.
Councilmember Ruelo?
Aye.
And, Councilmember Vitale?
Aye.